Everything on there, light is on, I will call the meeting to order. Um, let's see, first, we have a long-term financial plan with you.
Thank you, Mary.
Before Lynn starts, I just wanted to kind of touch on one thing. I'm not sure we talked about quite a bit at the, at the last work session related to the long-term plan. And the one thing I wanted to talk about is this, how this plan is kind of fluid. So we are planning for what we see today, but we had a couple of development meetings in the last few days and we started to think about, well, this could happen and then that could happen. And so, um, I just wanted to kind of share and get feedback. You know, we're taking more, this is what we think is going to happen over the next five years. But if a development occurs, let's say on the north side, you know, north of two twelve or in the southwest, kind of by forty and eleven, some of these things are going to get moved up dramatically and that might impact the entire plan. So when those things occur, um, kind of what we perceive to be our marching orders would be then to like say, okay, this new thing happened, we're going to insert it into our current long-term plan and make some adjustments and show you what those impacts might be. But I, I don't, I just want to make sure that we're not, we don't have this understanding that this wasn't in the plan, so we can't do it. And if you have that, then I think we might take a different approach. But we're viewing it as kind of a living document, we update it every year. But, you know, the way that, especially in our growing community, the way that things go, some of these things that we didn't think were going to happen all of a sudden do happen. No, we think we have a really good plan. But there are things that can't happen. So I just wanted to kind of put that on the table and get some reaction, just to make sure that we're giving you the plan that you think that you need to be successful.
I'm good with that. I think my reaction would be like, I appreciate that this is a living document and I know that we see it. I think if we have one of those events that would make us have to kind of shuffle, reorganize the deck chairs, if you will, then let's bring this up again. Or at least like raise a hand and get us thinking that because of X, we're going to have to take a look at the long-term financial plan and probably reorder things a little bit.
No, that's good feedback because one of the things that we've, we try to kind of hold is if we put everything that can possibly happen that has a real-world impact to what the rates and charges are going to be for connection fees or utility rates. And so we're trying to balance like worst-case scenario, what, what the impacts might be. Because there's some considerable projects, but you know, one of them is, you know, we have to bring up, was it a forty-two-inch sanitary sewer line?
A casing pipe under two twelve.
Casing pipe under two twelve, you know, and so in order for, to really need that, you need development to occur on the north side. And so is that going to happen in a year or in five years? You know, I know we're looking at the Trump line study, but there could be things that just kind of happen mechanically that impact that, you know, we have a, um, if the area develops kind of to the southwest, we're likely going to need another water tower. And so we have that at the, at the back end of this plan. So some of those things are getting in there, but we put it out at 2027 because we're not quite sure how that's going to roll out. But to your comment, Mary, I think that's what we can pledge to you back is like, when these things are not in concert with what you see in the plan, we owe you another analysis to see how this all shakes out. So you are feeling confident about the decision-making process.
I agree with that. I mean, we already have a lot of oversizing water and sanitary sewer budget line items for every year, kind of as placeholders, because we know some of this stuff is going to come up, right? And I'm glad we do have them in here because we know they're going to come up. We just don't know exactly what the timing is going to be and exactly how much. But I'm glad we're planning for it.
Any other thoughts, questions?
No. All right.
All right, so Esperance said this long-term financial plan is looked at annually and it identifies the infrastructure, equipment, staffing needs for the years, for the, the next five years as well as we know. Um, it's a moving document and we adjust it as needed. This plan incorporates the capital plan, so the equipment to show how we will finance the major projects in both the general and the enterprise funds. It also helps us determine our utility rates and connection fees that will support our enterprise operations. And also, I just wanted to point out that we haven't quite taken a look at the enterprise fund budgets and those will be looked at on October third. Some of the highlights from this draft of the long-term financial plan is we will have marginal utility rate increases are projected for the next five years. Fund balances are going to allow us to purchase some equipment using cash balances and inter-fund loans. Rather than the equipment certificates that we've seen every other year or every three years in the past. City tax rates are projecting to trend below thirty-five percent by 2026. We're not showing any significant increases in our total debt for the next five years. I wanted to point out also, which I will do later on in this presentation, that our capital equipment fund for the general fund currently shows a deficit at the end of 2024. And the plan is estimating a potential general fund debt levy of about two hundred and forty thousand per year for the public services fire department addition beginning in 2025. The reason I wanted to mention that to you is because I know that it's a big project. You guys have been talking about it for many years and it's good to plan for that and just so you can kind of visualize what that's going to look like.
All right, you just jumped in there.
Yep.
So you mentioned, I just want to highlight it, that the change for equipment purchasing, so we'll keep moving towards trying to buy equipment in cash, like with, um, current resources, you know, letting etcetera. But rather than using an equipment certificate, we use, for example, like the water fund or the sanitary sewer fund to do an inter-fund loan or essentially act as a bank rather than paying out administrative charges to Baker Tilly to get that financing, get the bond reading, etcetera. And so this is something that we've vetted with Steve McDonald at Abdo. He concurs with that, kind of thinking, why essentially borrow the money from someone else when you have the resources, um, on-site, in essence? Thank you.
Yeah. And this is just reminding residents and everybody that the enterprise fund is where the utility rates are kind of driven from. Property taxes do not pay for utility services. So... In this draft of the long-term financial plan, we are proposing 2023 utility rates. So the use charges, we're looking at water at three percent, sewer at three percent, and stormwater at five percent. Now, these rates have been determined based on assumptions in the plan for growth, usage, expenses, inflation, all of those types of things. So here I have the base rate, the tier one through five thousand gallons, tier two, tier three. The sanitary sewer is based on your usage of water and then your stormwater. And then I also have twenty-two as compared to 2023.
I would add, and Chad will likely have some stuff to share when you go through the enterprise fund budgets, but you know, stormwater is getting to be a pretty critical issue because it just seems like, you know, and Dan can probably have some perspectives on this, but there are so many permitting regulations and they seem to multiply on an annual basis. And so these permitting regulations, you know, aren't just enacted when the stormwater pond is built, but you know, Chad's sending folks out there to, to monitor them, do inspections, do maintenance and, you know, the scope of that service is expanding on an annual basis. What's, what's the name of that permit again?
NMS four.
NMS four. So we're actually planning to do a, a public hearing, an annual public hearing, on what that program is all about. But, um, I think looking forward, that's going to, that's going to be just as, you know, it's always been kind of like the third tier, I have always viewed it as like, well, that's stormwater, but water's always been like the bigger one and sanitary sewer prior to joining the Met Council system. But, uh, stormwater is going to be a significant issue, and it is already. And we're talking as a team of all ways that we can identify these permit regulations and what it's going to cost. But it's, in a lot of ways, you know, it's a kind of an example of unfunded mandates where you get all these permit regulations that really sound like a great idea and then you have to implement them and then you have to, you know, you look at, you know, Dan has a lot of stories about like the cost of just getting through these permit requirements and how much, I mean, there's value there, but how much value it adds to the, a business or some company trying to construct a building, needing all these regulations. So, um, as we go forward, it's going to be a complex and significant topic and with all those pieces that are going to increase the cost for our residents and businesses here in Carver.
The next part of this is the connection fees. The utility connection rates will are currently planned to increase at the same rate, the water, sewer, and storm rate of three, three, and five. These are, connection fees are paid at the time that a building permit is pulled or the cost to connect to water or sewer are paid by the developer sometimes. The area charges are what I'm referring to there. So everything is planned to go up except for currently the connection charge for the MCES is planned to stay the same, I believe. So I have that listed at 2023 staying the same. That is something that we just pay over to the Met Council. All right, so I have a example utility bill here with proposed rates for 2023. This is based on an eight thousand gallon usage here at the city of Carver. And I broke it down with how it would look on your utility bill. Overall, this equates to about a three percent increase in a monthly bill of three dollars and ninety-three cents. I quick before the meeting calced more of like what my family would use if I lived here. It's more like five thousand gallons and that would bring you up into the first tier. And that would be from eighty-three seventy-five up to eighty-six forty-seven. So that is a two dollars and seventy-two cent increase per month. And still at three percent increase overall.
And I think one of the things that, one of the things that Dan and Chad and I are working on is kind of really developing this water kind of guide that we talked about during the strategic plan, kind of informing folks more about their water. And I think there's a story to tell about how expensive it is for the system and the resident, like water, their lawn. Like, we had a, you know, a resident that had close to an eight hundred dollar water bill, which sounded ridiculous, but then, you know, I checked with Brenda, they used seventy-seven thousand gallons of water.
We have had a lot of those, Brent, this month.
So if you think about putting seventy-seven thousand milk gallon or containers of milk down Broadway, like what that would look like and that amount of water. And so there's a story to talk about that and I've been working with Lynn and her team. We're going to be, if the city's going to be developing, um, a high usage or high water usage notification so that if you're using over X amount, we're going to notify you that here are some ways that you can conserve here, so like, you know, the rachio system, but also like proper watering techniques because that type of user then puts pressure on us to have more water towers, more treatment. And, you know, it gives us an opportunity to talk about that there is a conservation rate that the more water they use, you know, when they're using seventy-seven thousand, after they get past the ten thousand, it's what, nine, I think forty-three? Nine sixty-two per ten thousand? And so that ends up, that's a lot of water. And so, um, the document and that communication piece that we're working on will help tell that story. Because in, in one way, we, yes, we certainly don't want people to have an eight hundred dollar water bill, but we also, in that same breath, don't want people to be using seventy-seven thousand gallons of water a month.
Was there, well, first I, I'd almost like to see these yards, they must be beautiful. But was there a thing, like, was somebody just like, their timer was wrong? Or they just like planted a lot of things and they just, or a pool getting filled?
So, a lot of times what happens is these newer homes, the developer will, you know, plant a sod or the builder and then they set their sprinklers to go off, you know, all the time. The homeowner moves in, they never reset it. They don't know how or they don't reset it.
I don't think about it, I think I've seen some of those.
It's like sploosh, 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 you know? And then they, they call because we must have made a mistake.
Okay.
And it's really hard conversation to have, you know? And there's a lot of hard conversations to have during the summertime and it's a lot of stressful conversations. Try to explain to them that the water that went through your meter is actual water used. Try to check this, try to do this. So yeah, it is.
Thank you for whoever's building those calls.
It's Brenda Efta.
Regular city lots, yes, a quarter of an acre, tops, yes.
Ooh, a lot of it has to be running off into the system. It has to.
I notice a lot of that when I'm walking in. I think if there's water in the gutter, it's probably too much water for your lawn.
Yeah, sounds like the education is important.
But also we all can realize too, as we get to like cooler weather now, you don't need to be watering.
Let it go dormant.
Well, I'm just saying for right now, so I don't think that, I think that homeowners too need to, like, there's that education.
Yeah.
Not only does it going like, it's set for the, when the developer came in, but.
You're going to change its season away as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and your mess, still, like our regulation is not to water every night, it's uneven, so. Yeah. Well, the education and all talk about, I mean, I know these are all really great education pieces, but anything about what if you converted lawn into something else that requires less water?
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're, we're in the idea collection stage of this. So if you have ideas, we're happy to kind of take them. We just recognize that there are too many instances where folks are talking about an exorbitantly high water bill.
Yeah.
And I think we, the city hasn't done a good enough job of like communicating back, like, you, you're using a lot of water. This isn't like, an eight hundred dollar water bill isn't the average water bill for a family of four.
Right, right, this is normal.
Your sprinkler doesn't need to run from midnight until nine o'clock in the morning.
If you have to wear boots.
Yeah.
It's a blade catch in the backyard, you're not watering too much. Okay, all right. Would we have the ability to like mid-month be like, ooh, America House is at fifty thousand gallons already? And then like, like call them, maybe not for summer twenty twenty-three, but like if we could get to that place where, you know, like, I can check an app on my phone right now and tell you where my cell data is. It'd be cool if we could kind of get to a place of, even if it's more proactively reaching out to residents. And I know that's asking for a hard conversation and proactively reaching out for a hard conversation, but.
I'd rather let them get the bill and then have the conversation with them.
There is, the technology is out there, we don't have it right now. There is cellular technology where you can, I mean, it's like a, you can get like that constant feedback. We don't have the technology and, um, we don't have like, I would say the staffing to match that, but I think it's, we could get there, it's just we're not there now.
No.
It's also like Big Brother looking over you too, halfway through the month.
Yeah, but I, education, I think some of these new homeowners, you just have so much to do and, you know, they're, you know, have all these new home.
I, you're right, I don't disagree that it could be a Big Brother thing, but if Big Brother wants to save me money, he's welcome to let me know what I'm doing over my data or using too much water.
I'll let them, I'll let them suffer in pain the first month, that usually opens their eyes.
Suffer and pay.
Yeah, suffer and pay. Dave, the, the best lessons I learned through your checkbook, and people bitch about their water bills all the time. Well, look at your sprinkler system, I don't know how I'm operating.
I don't know a ton about the technology that we have, so this might be just bunk, but in a community I worked for previously, we were able to take the top ten percent of water users and send them a postcard to say, it's kind of like a shame tactic.
You're in the top ten?
Yeah.
You made the top ten.
Like, I've sent this many, how am I using?
Right, so.
My neighbors.
So we found the average household to say, this is where the average is. You're so much higher. And then it was a little bit of like, check these five things to see what you could do.
Yeah, I like that, I like that.
Yeah, because that's not the proactive, like, hi, this is Lynn, are you having a nice day? Okay, huzz.
Turn off your sprinkler.
Yeah.
Go and turn off your sprinkler.
I'm outside your house.
But if we do want any information on alternative lawns?
Yeah.
Um, I know an entire group of people who.
I'm sure.
To maybe have some data, you could get into that lower tier if you switched X percent of your lawn to something else.
There are grants available to do that kind of thing too?
Yeah, there's one open right now, as a matter of fact.
K-Mac.
All right. No, I don't need all of them. I'll, I'll give the information to the city, to the city's house.
Excellent. Good ideas. So sometimes it's hard to compare utility rates between cities because some cities maintain their own wastewater facilities. And some cities like Dayton are just starting to get going by pulling people off of private septic. Uh, you also have some cities who have a municipal utility like Delano. But I did my best here to kind of compile local cities that compare to us, like our benchmark cities, and throw Carver in here and we are in the lower half. So you always hear people, our, our water bills are so high, our water bills are so high. But in, in comparison, I wouldn't say, I'd say that we're pretty average. So this is all based on an eight thousand gallon consumption. I went through and I calculated based on the rates on their fee schedule. So that's that comparison. I pulled some data charts off of our long-term financial plan. This is just a cash balance by planned use. It's just showing that what, where the cash is for each year. You can see that a lot of the cash is available in the enterprise capital and working capital. That is where Brent was talking about, we are going to be able to utilize cash and inter-fund loans to purchase equipment in twenty-three, twenty-four, maybe even further out. You'll see the yellow, the general fund balance is steady. That is because any unallocated fund balance, I don't know, we always end up transferring to special capital fund at the end of the year after the audit. So that cash balance is always staying pretty level. I just noted that capital projects include park dedication, special capital, and street maintenance just for this plan. And then if you wanted to really dig deep into these cash balances, I noted that page ten is supportive of this graph here. I mentioned in the beginning that our city tax rate is projected to fall below thirty-five percent. So this is just based on, you know, future expenses, growth, if we continue at the rates that we're planning. By 2027, we're looking at around thirty-two percent, um, city tax rate. So in 2022, we are, we're at, this year we're at forty-eight percent for an actual tax rate. And the different colors have it broken out between general and then the debt levies.
What is proposed levy for staff out here?
So that's just if we were going to add any sort of new, um, staff, like communication staff in 2027. Yeah, you can't really see it.
Okay, yeah, there it is, now I see it, the very little one, okay.
You don't make time for the communicator.
Yeah. So, yeah.
All right.
Can I just ask, does this include the public services building and the fire station issue?
Yes, it should include all of that. All right, and then this is just showing the city of Carver debt per capita. The green line represents the debt per capita when we take out all of those bonds that we have that we have assessment coming in from those. So you can see the big difference in those. So we do have funds coming in from assessments and that drops that debt per capita down quite a bit.
What is the, what is the uptick in 2024? Because I didn't necessarily notice a debt increase from twenty-three to twenty-four.
So that is going to be that public services building.
I thought you said 2025.
It's in 2020, it starts in 2024, the, the large increase is in 2025.
Thank you.
Yep, putting the dots together, thank you. Yep. Got it. But overall, the debt has decreased, go ahead, Brent.
Yes, I get that.
You might back it up on the side, I, I know the councils have heard this quite a bit, but I just want to emphasize it, like, you know, each of these projections is just that. And so every like, every budget year, we have a different story, something we might want to take on. And so based on your long-term plan and average budget with a three percent increase, this is what your tax rate looks like. But you all have a lot of experience to know that every budget is a different budget. And so this is in general what you can think of, but, um, it's not going to be exactly that because, you know, our value might go up or we might identify different needs that we want to take on that are not within the confines of the long-term plan. I feel like disclaimer guy tonight.
You are, you are. Talking about.
I just want to make sure that we have similar expectations because these are, these are, you know, some of the more, most significant documents that you look at for a policy. And so as a staff, when we feel confident that we know what your expectations are, it helps us to deliver a better series of recommendations and reports, information, etcetera, so.
So here, I, earlier I mentioned that the capital equipment fund shows a negative balance by 2024. This cash flow just kind of shows you the purchases, where the funds are coming from, the transfers into this fund, and it just gives us a goal to shoot for. Like, you're always wanting to look, okay, when, when is our ending balance negative? What can we do to get that to be positive? So I just, I just wanted to give you an overall look. I also want to point out that that forty-seven thousand dollar annual transfer in should not be there. This was before I got the, the final version of the draft from Abdo. I had them take that out. That was from an earlier assumption that they had from previous years. Currently, we do not have any scheduled annual transfers into this account. Just throwing that out.
Wait, can I just go back to that?
Yeah.
This is for the capital equipment. Meaning we don't have to do a certificate, equipment certificate for this, but you're showing as early as 2024 that we would have negative if we continue to purchase what's in the plan.
Yes.
So we got to figure out a pay, to pay for that or skinny down that list.
Yes.
We would do it, the inter, the inter-fund loan pays for that. So we don't have like, we don't have a quote-unquote capital equipment fund now. So this is the creation of it.
Yep.
So it's, you know, for instance, like we have a street maintenance levy, but we're bringing in levy dollars on an annual basis. So if we have a, do an inter-fund loan, let's say for a million dollars, we then likely create a schedule to say, okay, we're going to do a hundred thousand dollars from the general levy into the capital equipment fund to fund the inter-fund loan.
Okay, okay, that was my question.
Yeah.
Next question was going to be how are we going to fund that? So, okay. Thank you for anticipating that one.
So I just, I just brainstorming some strategies for building a capital equipment fund. I like to always be thinking, like, plan for equipment, building improvements, infrastructure for ten years. Just always be thinking even out further than five, like, let's analyze the buildings. What is going to happen, what kind of a big improvements need to be done on the actual buildings? I mean, City Hall, yes, this is brand new, but when are we going to start needing to be looking at like roof repairs or different things like that? Get those on the books. Yes, we're going to show a negative balance, but we at least know where we need to shoot for those improvements. It's very important to know those things. Commit, this is just an idea, commit local government aid to capital equipment rather than levy relief. Local government aid is great, but it's not guaranteed. So instead of lowering our levy, that's, you know, that's super nice that you guys do that for the city of Carver, but it's not guaranteed. So if you were to just say, okay, we're getting this money in, we're going to just throw it over to capital equipment and then we're just going to use it for equipment that comes up down the road as a savings type thing, that's great, that way if we don't get it next year, no hard feelings. Just thought.
Didn't we kind of unofficially do that for the last plotra we bought? We waited to see what LGA was going to be before approving that one? I mean, very, very unofficially.
I think so, I can't remember that exactly.
I don't remember it. Sorry to interrupt. No, you're fine. Use this to come for unallocated fund balance from the general fund. You're currently doing this for the special capital fund. So I don't know if you would need the special capital fund. Do you want to talk about dissolving that or, you know, talking about things that come up that you need, you know, need to get money for, try to come up with that from somewhere else? Just that. Budget for an annual transfer to the capital equipment fund from the general fund. So say every year, we're going to commit seventy-five thousand dollars just to the capital equipment fund.
Just like you do pavement management.
Yes, so that every, you know, we know that we're going to need a, you know, a big, big, you know, job on the church by the river, needs a whole new front or something. It's going to be a million dollars or, you know, I'm just, just saying something. Yeah. So you start doing seventy-five thousand dollars a year and that helps kind of pad that a little. So you start doing $75,000 a year, and that helps kind of pad that a little bit. It's just an idea. Stay accountable for over-budget CIP items and document the amounts and reasons. So we're at the time of inflation right now, and every project is going to seem like it's coming in over budget. Stay accountable, stay on those items. Why is it over budget? Why did it come in so high? We can't have every single item coming in over budget. So push back, make sure we know why it came in over budget. Adjust the items. You know, maybe we can't get that done this year. Whereas before, we'd just be like, oh, yeah, sure, get it, get it, get it. You have to stay tight and, and know why those things are coming in over budget. Same as if something comes in under budget, then maybe that allows us to move something up from the next year. So those are just ideas. And then utilize interfund loans or debt when necessary. And so we talked a little bit about that.
So I have a question. If we put it in the capital equipment fund, does that then lock us into it has to be equipment-type items? I mean, you talked about the front of the building, but... Because we have the special capital fund right now, which covers anything and everything because we don't know what could come up, anything and everything can and does come up. So what I don't want to do is take special capital fund, stop funding it, get rid of it, whatever, have it in another more restricted fund, and now we end up shooting ourselves in the foot later for something else.
This would be, so the special capital fund funded water, all that stuff. But if, if it was a special capital item that did pay for something that was out of water sewer storm, they had to pay their fair share anyway. So there was always accounting going on behind the books that ended up having to, or behind scenes, that ended up having to show that they paid their fair share. So this is generally saying that this is general fund items. So it's like the general fund's share of, say, the public services building. And so the water fund would have their share of the public services building. I don't think that getting rid of the special capital fund would be detrimental, but we can certainly keep it.
Absolutely. I think where Christie's coming from is we've used special capital for paving that extra section of the bluffs. We've used it for wind pumps go out at the wells. It's kind of the, in my mind, it's like that water heater fund that homeowners should all have, where we've been able to be like, Brent calls and you're like, okay, great, how are we going to pay for this? And it's like, ah, it's covered in the special capital. So being able to have that fund, that's kind of a catch-all. That said, I think earlier this year, we were talking, and the fund balance in there is getting pretty significant. So I don't know that we need to have $500,000 in there. I don't remember what the number was, but it was fairly significant. So, but I don't know that I want to see that go away entirely because I feel like that's really our emergency.
I'm good with having a cap, maybe a cap on it, and then we do something else. But, yeah, I think, I just, I don't think it's a good idea to not have that available.
I agree.
Especially considering the last couple of years. Unknowns of the world.
Yeah.
I like the idea of planning for 10 years.
We can figure that out. Yeah, those are not unknowns. There are some knowns that we can plan for. So I like that idea, having that longer-term view, especially for this type of stuff.
Engineering fees have always been skyrocketing.
No labor with it.
I know. That's just it. But, you know, planning out, that's one of the major things about the water treatment facility that year 2024, you can see that. So I don't mind having a, a fund, a rainy day fund, shall we say. But focus it more on the apartment itself. Just don't, we just can't overfund it either.
All right. So I'm just going to call out the 2023 planned capital improvements. I have them in sections here. So the top is the general fund. You guys have seen this a few times here. The middle is the water fund. And then the public service storage building and turnout addition. This is the architectural plans, 108. That is going to be split between general, water, and sewer, as well as the accounting software. And then the stormwater rate study. And then all the...
Can you tell me more about that?
So the stormwater, that kind of relates to these permitting pieces. We need to kind of do a full scan, if you will, of the entire system to determine what we need to do here, what we need to maintain, and then have a corresponding rate that essentially pays for that.
All right. Thank you. And then I did the same thing for '24. So here you can see that we'll be bonding for the turnout gear addition as well as the public services storage building. Whereas the front-end loader, the service truck dish, the public service truck, and the replacement truck will all be split between general, water, and sewer because their usage is throughout all of those departments.
'24 is when we saw that big jump that you were asking about, right?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, yes. We said 2025 earlier, but we bond for it in '24. So it starts hitting in '24, that's what.
So I know the last time we talked about this, we talked about pushing some of those. Was it, we were talking about the trucks, that they weren't all lumped into one year? Has that happened? Because having big spikes in it can be a little troublesome. So did that happen?
Yes. So we're, we have some being purchased here this year in '22. Let's see, we don't have any here, do we? Well, there's a couple here, and then I believe there's some in '25. Being purchased. And then a plow truck in '26, I believe.
Yeah, there's another truck in '25.
Yeah.
There's two trucks. There's a plow truck and a service truck with a plow.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we tried to sprinkle them throughout the remaining years of the plan, but they were all going to be in one year and bonded for. Okay. So timeline and priorities. So today you got the draft of the long-term financial plan. We are looking for comments and changes that you would like to be made and so that we can go ahead and get the final long-term financial plan revised. We will present that on October 3rd, and you guys will have an opportunity to adopt it. Following that, kind of encompasses this, is looking at the fee schedule, which will include those utility rates. So we'll start reviewing those in early November and look to adopt the fee schedule in December. And that is my last slide on that.
All right. Thoughts, questions? Long-term financial plan. Does anyone want to go first?
For the fees. What was my question? Don't those... Those have to basically just cover the costs of, of the utility? Or not the utility, but the use, right? We can't. We can't make it as a, a revenue stream, correct? It has to be revenue neutral.
Correct. So the utility fees are based on what's in this long-term plan?
Got it. Different fees. Thank you.
Laura, you have anything?
Um, no, the slide before, or two slides before was super helpful, the 2023, which the funding sources.
Okay.
I just, so the certified, you know, general fund is overarching. So like the tractor blower and the mower are in your operating, but the certified levy and the third street bridge are coming from the special capital, correct?
Yes. We're planning on, I think Steve has us planning on transferring those from the special capital fund or in a fund loan if needed. I'm sorry, which two items?
The certi- certified levy and the third street bridge. So they're not coming from your operating budget that you're seeing in the next presentation.
Okay.
So if we have things in here that say general fund, should it be saying special capital for us so that we know where, that's where it's coming from? Or, or like non-levied or something?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Chris, you have anything?
Um, I have a question. So when we're talking about the city tax rate going below 35%, is, is that a magic number? I mean, is there a reason that we focus on that one?
Uh-uh.
No?
Okay.
That's just the results. That's not the number we were aiming for. That's just what it shows.
Okay.
I don't think you have anything else.
Okay. Um, the only question I had was in the, what is this? The ABDO calculations. And there was some home assumptions. How do you make that? There we go.
What page are you on?
I'm on page 22 of the electric documents, page four of conception of the ABDO. So the new houses through 2027. How many have we been having? I can't possibly pull up a previous packet and look. But I mean, is that 100, 120, pretty consistent?
So we did decrease our assumptions for '23 and '24, which I think sounds appropriate.
Yeah.
We, okay, we did.
The 120 is kind of what we've been at.
Okay. Okay.
Actually, I think it was even more than that, probably.
Okay, so this is really recently conservative.
Yeah.
Great.
Is it though, considering that we're going to be fairly landlocked?
When?
From 2020, I mean, we're going west, right? We're going to hit left and... And south.
Yes.
Right, but, I mean, that's not going to, I mean, those houses aren't coming in in 2023.
Well, 20, we have enough homes just with Timber Creek in the preserve to probably run us through 2025.
Okay. Perfect, because, well, because where, where we've been building is going to landlocked here with Lindsay, unless they decide to sell.
Ah, I see what you're saying, with the specific property owner. I see what you're saying.
As a large one, yes, so it will stop there until they...
They have a pretty spic- contiguous.
But that's where, I would also add that growth in the southwest part of the city seems pretty imminent based on what we're hearing from some of the people. You know, as long as the council wants to move forward with, you know, a truck line project, so.
Okay.
What's an estimated, if everything went as planned and we are talking now, we would think they might break ground for their first homes down there? Any idea? Any crystal ball?
They... What was it? Dan and I met with them before Aaron returned. I think we were saying that we need to get everything ramped up in '23, and they would break ground on utilities in '24, right? So first homes value probably '25? Does that sound right, Dan?
Sounds about right, yeah.
Okay. And so you think that the numbers are good going through 2024 right now with the stuff that we have?
So Timber Creek is 348, and the preserve is 68. So we'll have upwards of 400 lots available.
Or 22.
Yeah. Timber Creek is under construction right now, but even thinking about those townhomes, there's 74.
Okay.
So if those townhomes all got built in one year, that's 74 new homes per month.
Okay. I feel comfortable.
It didn't make a...
Sorry, that was your...
No, that was a good question.
You brought the page up and I...
Well, you know, another thing that kind of supersizes this is if like the CD does their project, all of a sudden you have 68.
102.
102, okay.
I really appreciate seeing this. Kind of, I think we do a lot of our work in the day-to-day. So being able to see the long-term plan, I think that this is very good. We have this, I like seeing the tax rates and everything out into the future. My only question is, I see the kind of road take back in 2025. Felt like we were talking about it like it was imminent when we talked about it at our last, I don't know when that was, meeting or work session.
I mean, the decision-making is quicker, but the actual, like, a project would probably take a little bit longer.
Okay, so we would potentially close on that, if you will, and then do the work years later?
No, it's, I would just say it's a moving, you know, it's probably going to take us much of, what, '23 to get this figured out with the county?
Yeah, yeah, you've got the turn back first, and then you've got understanding what you would actually do to '40. And if you were going to do something as far as local improvement, then you'd have program in it, then you'd have doing it. And so that's the city's expense that could be yet to be defined.
Very designing it probably in late '23, part of '24, construction season '25.
Okay, okay. Um, I think that was my only question. Thank you. Moving on?
Moving on.
All right. Let's see. Moving on to the 2023 general fund budget review.
So Lynn's setting this up just wanted to emphasize, you know, this step of setting the preliminary budget is really you're setting the budget for the budget as we've talked about for many years. So even though you'll be talking about it, and then we'll kind of be cleaning up some specific budget items, don't feel like you're in a position where you have to decide. And that could be less you feel compelled to, but you don't need to decide singular budget topics, whether that's tonight or at the levy. Now, that might influence where you want the levy to be, so then it's pertinent. But I don't want you to feel bound because what you're doing is saying, this is just the maximum amount that we're going to collect in property taxes. And then as we go through the fall, we'll continue to give you updates. Well, you know, one of the things that we're waiting on is what our health insurance premium's going to look like. You'll see in one of the Lynn's slides, we went from 5% to 10%. But, you know, we've been in years where that's, you know, been exorbitant, you know, and then we've had to kind of game plan for how we're going to accommodate that. So this kind of wanted to kind of leave that out before we get started.
Thank you. Thank you, just enter man.
Yes. I feel like he's a small print.
Yeah.
He's a small print.
Oh.
It's a t-shirt.
Yeah.
It's a nickname. Okay. Well, this is super exciting. We are... We are...
It's a t-shirt. I'm a small print. Yeah.
No, the presentation. We're at September 6th. We are at the second version of the budget presentation. So a lot of work has gone into this. I've learned a lot so far. It's been great bouncing ideas off of Brent. And here we are. So the next time, we will be at the September 19th looking at a preliminary levy. And then we would get to talk about enterprise fund budget. So the work does not stop, which is exciting. We'll continue to review rates, and like Brent said, we'll get more information as I, and as we know it, then we make adjustments, and we just keep talking about that and updating council as that happens. December 5th is another exciting day. It's truth in taxation, public hearing. We're going to fill the council chambers with property owners who will have opportunity to share their thoughts on the budget and the levy. So it's going to be exciting. And then December 19th, council will consider the 2023 budget and tax levy. But today, here's where we're at. So what has changed? We're at draft number two. What has changed? On draft number one, I had the incorrect amount for the 2011 bond. I didn't have the 2021 refunding amount in there. So that created a savings of $14,000 on our tax levy for the bond, for the debt levy, excuse me. 2019 B levy, after meeting with Steve McDonald, we talked about the street project for the 2019, and there was a savings in this project. This project's been done for a little bit, and there was a savings of approximately $500,000. And so we are going to close out that project to the debt service account. And what that does is it gives us a cash balance in that debt service account to allow us to reduce our debt levy every year for the next 16 years by $30,000, which is really nice. So that gives us a savings next year of $30,000, and the next year, and the next year. So until that bond is paid off. Full-time salaries. This draft two is showing all employees receiving a 5% increase versus draft one. There were about 10 employees that were only receiving 3%. This is just a draft. And then also health insurance. There's an increase on this because we went from 5% to 10% increase from 2022 just because we don't know. And we just feel more comfortable with the 10%. And also, I also made a change to the way that employees who have family health insurance will be paying for their part of the family health insurance. We had a average composite rate being deducted from all of those employees' checks. And that's what they were paying. And that's what they were paying for this year and previous years. I feel it's more fair to allow them to pay that twenty-five percent that they're actually paying because we have an age-based banded health insurance here at the city of Carver.
Okay.
And so I feel like if you have a family of five, you should be paying twenty-five percent of a family of five rather than a composite rate. If you are only covering you and your spouse and a child, that's more fair for you to pay twenty-five percent of that. So moving forward, um, that is what that health insurance is also built in there. So that, that change is reflected in those numbers. It changed the calculation a little bit in how we're going to be calculating that. Assessment contract, we also got our final number in for that. Draft one was thirty-six thousand and draft two was thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty. So overall, this draft is showing a savings of eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-nine.
Can we just pause there for a second a little bit? I think you'll get into it later and there'll be an opportunity for discussion. I just wanna, you know, highlight this full-time salary piece that the mayor and I, when Courtney first brought this up at the work session, I kind of mentioned, there's a little, there's a little bit of a danger in kind of opening up as we haven't approved, um, union agreement. The city's, um, policy is always, not policy, but kind of practice has been to match that. And I guess I just ask the council to consider, if you're going to depart from that, what are the circumstances? And inflation can be that circumstance. And, you know, at some point, the city might ask the union for some type of concession. But I just, it's a mid-contract or, let's say, inflation, heaven forbid, was like at fifteen percent, you know, would you wanna increase the pay scale by fifteen percent? You might, we might wanna like say, is this where we need to be? And maybe this buys some goodwill. And there's union and non-union folks that would be involved with this. But it's, it's a departure from what the city has done by practice. And so I just wanted to highlight there's, anytime you do that, there's pros and cons to it. So that's, you'll see later on in Lynn's drafts, you'll see an option where you can say, ah, we're gonna stay with what we have or there's this other option. So we wanted to, recognizing that obviously we're all employees and there's a kind of a, a different kind of uniqueness to that conversation. We wanted to make sure that we're really transparent with the line of thinking here and make sure that you understand that this is a, it's not a recommendation. It's a hundred percent driven by where the council sits and what you're comfortable with. That's probably another small print.
That's not a. There you are. All right. This is giving an overlook of the two thousand and twenty-three debt service preview. So the two thousand and nineteen improvement bond, you can see that that went down by thirty thousand as well as I corrected the amount for the two thousand and twenty-one refunding and that decreased by the fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So overall, from two thousand and twenty-two, we have a decrease of fourteen point four percent, which equates to two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars.
I, you know, I mentioned, we've kind of, Lynn talked about this during the budget kickoff, but when you look at that, uh, two thousand and fifteen B refunding, that last collection year is coming up, that hundred, one hundred thousand. And although we don't, wanted to say we, you know, to council member Bob's point, we don't wanna like say we have this free money and we, you know, how can we spend it? But, you know, the other thing I've heard from the council is like you, we don't want that roller coaster effect. And so this, even though we didn't time it that way, like it times out somewhat in our favor if you're gonna be taking on the public services and fire station building project, that you have at least a hundred thousand dollars of a, I think you said, two forty, um, bond levy. You know, that's significant as far as what that's gonna be to the average, uh, property taxpayer in Carver for a new levy. So you don't have that fluctuation in property tax.
So this just shows the market change by year from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-two.
What's market, what?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm, I'm lost as to what, what these numbers are.
Yes, so this is on existing homes. So from each year, the Carver County provides us with market. So when, remember when I showed you this exact thing for the new construction and it was seventy-eight million? This is the portion of existing homes market.
Oh, okay, so it's not new construction?
No, this is just existing.
Just market value.
Yes.
Change of existing.
So the number of the percentage has been around twenty-one percent on average? So this is a reflection of that.
Yep.
Increase. So when you see the average value home go from three twenty-five to four eighty-five?
Right, yes.
This is a reflection of that.
Yes, so this is twenty point seven six percent increase from two thousand and twenty-one. If you were to add in the new construction to this.
Oh, for sure, then it's.
It's thirty-one point nine three percent increase overall.
Thirty what?
Thirty-one point nine three percent increase in city of Carver.
Value.
Value.
And that's frankly why, in a lot of ways, like tax rate, even though it means something, like it's somewhat insignificant because someone who has a three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar home last year, theoretically has a four hundred and ten thousand dollar home this year. So you kind of, that tax rate doesn't really tell the story because you, in essence, you wanna see what that tax impact is because that same person, in most cases, owns that same home. And so you wanna see what that net impact is to their property taxes.
So this is the general fund levy history. We have it called out in the three categories, general levy, debt service levy, and then the street maintenance levy, which we have now done for the last, this will be the second year. The total levy increase for this, in this draft, we're looking at six point nine percent. Draft one shows seven point two and in two thousand and twenty-two, we were at eleven point nine. So the estimated property taxes, our average valued home for twenty-three is four hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred dollars. If, if we take all of the market value and everything, we would be at a thirty-seven point one-two tax, percent tax rate for the city of Carver. And that would be one thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars of city tax for a four hundred and ten thousand dollar home. That's a one point eight percent decrease for that same person who owned that home in two thousand and twenty-two.
And that's the draft two number, everything that you showed us.
Everything I'm showing you is draft two.
Okay.
That's correct. So that's twenty-nine dollars decrease, just for the city tax. So Carver is still in the lower half for the tax rate within the Carver County cities. I left the twenty-two Carver, um, tax in here as well. And then I have draft one and draft two in here. And this is all in that four hundred and ten thousand dollar home. So city tax impact comparison, you can see over on the left, you have the, the final of what we had in two thousand and twenty-two on the average valued home. And now you can see that average valued home in two thousand and twenty-three for the draft two. And like I said before, it's a twenty-nine dollar decrease from two thousand and twenty-two. I also calculated what that twenty, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollar home would pay on the thirty-seven percent tax rate if they had no change and it would be the eleven hundred and ninety-one. I have a slide coming up on that, though, right here. So if this, if you had a home in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three and it had no value change, so three hundred and twenty-eight thousand in both years, your taxes would go down by three hundred and sixty-two dollars just for the city of Carver. And then on the bottom there, four hundred and ten thousand dollar home, no value change or very little, it would be four hundred and sixty-three dollars at the current rate of thirty-seven percent.
Okay, just two editorial comments. So the one upper left, you know, the twenty-one percent increase is an average. So you're gonna have some homes that didn't see that. So I would offer that the three sixty-two is a, is gonna be in the ballpark of a real number for some homeowners in the city. I think the more significant pieces, you know, since we've had so much growth, that the newer neighborhoods, you, you know, you're not gonna find homes in the Meadows or Oak Tree going up by twenty-one percent there. They were creating an upward trend. And so it likely isn't exactly the same, but, um, you know, in some cases, you know, based on what you're talking about here, there'd be a significant city tax, uh, decrease if their value was in that ballpark.
Good point. So we've seen a lot of these slides. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but please stop me if you want me to slow down. So for the general fund revenues, we're planning a conservative increase in the building permit revenue. We talked about, um, in the long-term plan, that number of homes, we kind of pulled back a little bit on those just because of the current economy. Local government aid is down by about forty thousand. We have a special capital fund transfer in to revenue of a hundred thousand and that's just for tax levy relief. Um, and then we have an overall increase in the general fund revenues of fourteen percent from two thousand and twenty-two.
Can you go back one slide?
Yep.
And Lynn kind of referenced it during the long-term financial plan, but that capital fund transfer is something that I think we're gonna wanna, you know, wean ourselves off of because, one, it's kind of, it's not a consistent source of revenue. And so if we start to rely on it the year that we can't use it, um, it'll have that much of an impact. So we'll wanna have a conversation about at one point, do we wanna take ourselves off that? But it's, it's been a pretty significant budget plug for us for a number of years. And then as we start to use that special capital fund, maybe that's not the area. But, um, you know, we can run, you know, various options with, you know, more or less of a special capital fund contribution. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, so.
Yep, I like that, too.
So I think it was mentioned in the last work session that you guys wanted to see two thousand and twenty-two compared to two thousand and twenty-three, so I put these kind of side by side. Property taxes, these, I just wanted to also mention that these are revenues only from general fund revenues. This does not include any debt levy or street maintenance levy. So it's just the property tax, um, general fund revenue, uh, building permits, LGA, they're all called out across the bottom. Obviously, you can see that the property tax is the highest, building permits, um, and so on, so forth. So it's, this is a nice slide. This is helpful to see year-over-year change, so please let's keep.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. I mean, we always have the pie chart, which is the next slide. But again, I'm like, okay, I kind of get the distribution, but I, it's helpful to understand the changes.
Yes.
Especially with that LGA lower, just.
Yeah, building permits, like, yeah, just.
What's consistent.
Yep. And then you can see again, property taxes is making up a lot of it, building permits, and then it gets smaller and smaller. We highlighted these in the last work session as well. I did add in the emergency plan that, um, Brent has spoken about in the past. And we have the yard waste collection, which is also new for this year. So those are a couple that we're excited about. Um, Southwest Prime, remind me, didn't we?
Is that enough, considering what we've spent this year?
So I haven't gotten the most recent invoice. We are up to probably close to fifteen thousand for the year, I wanna say.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which would be through July?
Through August.
Okay. Okay, okay. I knew we were, yeah, watching that because the prime ridership was up.
Right. Yes, so I will have an update at the next council meeting.
One of the pieces, too, is this numbers are a reflection of kind of a message that I felt like I got from the council that you might scale back in some of the, like, the prime trips to the airport and some of the other pieces.
Did you read my mind?
I was just talking before I started talking.
Yeah.
So we had asked for information, um, coming back about whether we could pick and choose some of those services. What was the answer? Did we find out?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it'll, so it's a, in essence, an annual, or is it semi-annual contract? So Aaron will bring that back later this fall and then you'll have an opportunity to kind of build it as you want it.
Okay, but that, from what you've seen, then that is an opportunity for us that we can remove the airport service from it? Okay.
Okay.
Troy, you look.
Not for that, but.
Right.
And I'm also, you know, the other thing that I'd like, as we look at that contract, there've been a lot of complaints about not having state fair service out to Carver Station, right? And that's not something that's in our current contract. So if that's something we wanna have as well.
Something to look at. I've heard that, too. For me, the airport, while it is convenient and cheap for those who need a ride to the airport, to me, this service is more, um, for people who don't have the vehicle, who need to get to the grocery store, the doctor, that kind of thing. If you can afford to take a flight, you can afford to get yourself to the airport and back is kind of my view on that. So, um, like I said, well, it's a nice perk for those who have to fly out and use it. I don't know, at least for me, that's the intent of the program, that why I support that program.
Fair enough.
That's something we'll discuss later, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think in order to like, I mean, it's something you can discuss now. If you wanted to like fully fund prime and if you're talking about state fair service, you know, we're probably talking.
A lot more.
Double that number.
It's a lot more, it's double that at least.
Yeah.
You know, sure.
Is prime state fair now, or is that the right, I mean, is that the regular city bus, is that considered prime?
It wouldn't be.
It's a, it's a special event service, like Twins games, like Vikings games, like concerts.
But so you would still take the small prime buses, isn't it?
No, 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 it's a big, big bus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, so that's one of the things we could do as a follow-up and to say, like, we are interested in full prime along, I mean, along with state fair service, you know, then it could send, do you wanna consider like their services to the Vikings and Twins? You'd have to kind of give a, you know, we can have them build us a menu, I suppose, of like, you know, what cost X for this and Y for that.
Yep.
Is that where you wanna take this or?
I would, well, I mean, if we're gonna look at the contract, I mean, it's just that we look at it. I've heard tons of thousands of dollars for special event service, the fair. I'm not sure we're ready to swallow tens of thousands of dollars in addition to the prime that we're supporting today. But it would be good to have that information just from a resident perspective, just so that they understand why we're maybe not choosing those.
I'd agree. I'd like to see the information because when we do get questions, why doesn't it come out here? Why doesn't it come out here?
How hard can it be?
Right. And then we can say, well, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, that's how hard it could be.
That's, yeah, exactly.
I agree. Yeah, Christie, and I'd love to see the menu. I'd love to see what it costs so that we can say that. But I think, I think of prime in this contract as more essential service for this budget line item. So no airport, no fun stuff, no, no exorbitant state fair service, no Twins games, all that kind of stuff. And it's available in neighboring cities, so it's not that there isn't an option.
So those numbers, we'll get, those numbers?
Yeah, I don't know if it's gonna coincide with you saying the preliminary levy. So one of the things, you know, we haven't done this by practice, I know other municipalities do, but you might, you know, you have these budget pieces, but you might wanna establish a contingency and say, well, we don't, you know, we wanna add X amount of thousand into this just to, but, you know, give us the opportunity to change our mind on some things. Or you can say, if that comes up, we're gonna use a special capital fund to just, um, not like have this like small print thing.
Stop.
But I, you know, I think one of the outcomes that we don't, that you, we don't wanna help facilitate you being in is you wanna discuss this, but you're constricted because you've already kind of created, created a boundary.
Yeah.
And so you really can't unless you go into an area that you don't wanna go into as far as the general finances of the city. So I'm just gonna throw that on the table.
We're funding what we're doing today, right? I mean, that's what we have in the budget. That's what I'm comfortable continuing to fund, right?
Also, I wanna add the caveat that prime has grown exponentially in the past.
Yes, it has. That's the kind of way I asked the question.
Yeah, so we're funding, if it were to continue twenty twenty-two, but I'm not sure that's gonna happen. I think it's going to continue to grow.
Agreed.
Mm-hmm.
All the trends would say that. So, you know, we might have to contribute additional a couple thousand dollars next year if the trend continues and we continue to provide the same services we are today.
Because we originally had fifteen.
And ten?
Fifteen and we raised it to twenty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
I would, you know, just. I would, you know, distant, I'd, you know, what I would say, we're probably late on the 20,000.
But that's included, that's including right now, airport.
Correct.
We'll just call the airport.
Correct.
That's including that. So that number could be more on the, on the money.
I would say.
We were chosen to remove that.
Airport ride is a really small percentage of that number. There are a couple here and there, but in the report that we get monthly, you can see where the trips are. And it's pretty rare that you see an airport trip in there. So yes, it absolutely adds up, and if that takes off, it will be more expensive. But I would say 20,000 might be low even for the daily trips that you're looking to support right now.
Are we looking for, what's the number one coming up? Is that?
Prime MD.
Prime MD, is that included in this prime or we, is that included outside?
Okay.
Well, yeah, no. This includes everything that you have now, but it's kind of based on some of the conversation. But like the number is intended to fund everything that you choose. Now, if you add more or take out less, the number will fluctuate. And this is frankly, it's a really hard number to come up with because it has grown exponentially. And it's marketed really well, it's fairly easy to use from what I understand.
I would say, Lynn, if you're comfortable with $20,000, again, looking into that crystal ball, I, I don't want to use it as a crutch, but we do have that water heater fund and the special capital project fund.
Yeah.
So that we can go back if and when we again get to July and it's not coming out.
It needs to be 25,000, then we, yeah, address it then.
But if you think going into this, that $20,000 is light, we should be having that conversation right now. I'm guessing you don't think it is, being that that was your recommendation, so.
I'm fine with the 20,000 right now, to keep that in there. Again, knowing that we'll get some more back information out of me, so.
All right, so here we have the general fund expenditures broken out by departments. Public services eating up all my money.
I'm kidding, I like to give Chad a hard time.
He deserves it. Big print.
He's a good guy. All right. So employee pay and benefits, this is the same slide that we had before. I just called out the increase of $13,923 from draft one that Brent talked about, the 5% pay increase for all full-time employees. That wasn't reflected in draft number one. Full-time employees at entry-level positions may receive more than a 5% increase. We talked about this at the last work session. The pay scale increased by 8% based on the super price index, and that was discussed in the union contract. And then we also.
We need to go back one, please.
Yeah.
So when we're talking about the 5% increase overall, help me remember the union, non-union. So the union is proposing 5% or the union is proposing 3%?
No one's proposing, I would say, anything. So the union agreement is 3%.
Okay.
The 5% is based on feedback from the budget kickoff of looking at what the impact would be to get 5%.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And the union agreement goes through '23?
That's correct. So doing the 5% may, is an exception to our union agreement of 3%?
Correct. But it impacts, because of past practice, it impacts, that percentage universally has been applied to both union and non-union.
Correct, correct.
And some union roles, because of the pay scale increase, may already be getting 5%.
They're getting 8%.
Some.
There's about eight people, eight union employees getting 8%.
Better at the.
Better on bottom.
So in the past, we sort of went with what the union has said. So right now, we're at 3, so I'm just trying to remember why we talked about 5.
I wasn't hearing.
I brought it up.
I brought it up. And I, we talked about because of that 8% in the pay shift scale, and some folks will be getting 8% already. And then we also talked about it in the context of all of the employee engagement stuff that we're doing. The survey, you know, how inflation is so mild, you know, how are we going to retain folks? How are we going to, you know, hopefully help to balance things out a little bit for the inflation that they're paying driving here and living life in 2022, but really kind of going at that employee engagement and.
Okay.
Trying to keep folks around.
Okay. Thanks for helping me remember.
So then the health insurance is increasing to 10% estimate. And then I talked about that composite rate changing to an actual rate for any kind of dependent care. I don't want to stress you out in general. I know yours is for engineering, but.
Can we do the speed round?
Yes, I'm trying to hurry.
Okay, thank you.
But we have five minutes, yeah.
I mean, in here. Okay. Assessing increase of 8%, so that's an increase of 1380 from draft one. We went through the capital improvement needs. So here.
Can you hit that back? So this, this is kind of in reference to that long-term financial plan. You said general fund, these are the, those are the source of funds, so we'll just copy that into the, the slides that you were referencing during the long-term financial plan. This is the specific source of that funding.
So here are the levy option scenarios. Option one is to leave the wages at 3% for those employees who aren't receiving that 8% or 5% increase due to the pay scale shifting. The levy increase would be 6.5%. The tax rate would be reflected at 36.97%. The tax impact to the, excuse me, average valued home of 410,000 would be $1,518, decrease of $35 for 2022. Option number two, 5% wages for all, 6.9, this is basically draft two. This is what you see. Option two is draft two. This is what we've been going through this entire slide show. And then we do have draft one down there at the bottom. And that's budget process update. Council, direction on preliminary budget levy tonight. Consider adoption of a resolution setting preliminary tax levy on the September 19th. We're going to continue updating this budget as we get information in. I will be back on October 3rd for the enterprise budgets and again, continue updating the budget for that truth and taxation public hearing on December 5th.
All right. Do you guys want to discuss this or do you want to hold this for the council meeting?
My comments are pretty brief.
My comments are pretty brief. I would support option two, also bottom is draft two with that 5%.
Okay.
Speed round.
Ditto.
You win your award.
Yeah, I agree.
But. Okay, yes, I agree, I like option two, 5% wages increase. My only question and feedback on the presentation, can we resurrect Brent's slide on franchise fees? I think that that's completely fine print, small print, but I think it's an important part of our tax story to tell when we're doing that.
You bet.
Agreed. Okay, all right.
I get all the words in the names.
Okay, sorry. Okay, with that, it looks like we will hold Ironwood and Hartwell intersection review until the meeting. Sorry, Dan.
I'm there for you.
All right, with that, can we hold city managers' report and council requests?
Yep.
Nice.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Perfect, we've got a motion to adjourn for a second. Sorry, all those who prefer, say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.